Welcome to our council meeting on Monday November 20th. In consideration of those running, please turn off your cellphone or other electronic devices. The invocation will be given by Councilperson Laura Vanelle Call by the way you please stand.
Almighty God, who has set before us the responsibilities of the city, we ask your guidance and direction that we, the members of council, may do what is best for the people that live here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a motion for the minutes for the 11:06:17 and session 11:13:17?
Second.
All of them can say aye.
Aye.
As a visitor recognition, if you will not recognize visitors, please raise your hands if you wish to speak. On call upon, please use the podium. Clearly state your name and address into the microphone and eliminate your comments in three minutes. Any dialogue must be conducted through you as president of council, although your comments, questions, can be addressed to council administration. Mr. Sternoff?
The young one?
It's me?
Yeah.
Actually, I was wrong all the time. Ray Sternoff, 346 Virgwood Lane, Pansville. Mr. Hack, member of the council, please raise your hands if you do not believe that transparency and timely communications to residents and local government is a good thing. I don't see any hands up, so I assume that you feel it's somewhat important to keep residents informed. That being the case, then we support that all public presentations made to council during a public meeting be put on the website as soon as possible after a public presentation is made, rather than embedding a presentation in council meeting minutes after they are approved maybe two or three weeks later. A recent case in point is the proposed AMI presentation made to council at the last public meeting. Why should that presentation be embedded in the meeting minutes rather than being put out immediately for public consumption? Is this in this age of electronic messaging? Why not put on the city website the next day? Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Moving to legislation. If you wish to come down legislation, you must request to do so at this time. Those making such a request will then be called upon after the reading. Any dialogue must be conducted through you as president of council, although your comments or questions can be addressed to the council administration or both. On call upon, please use the podium. Clearly state your name and address into the microphone and eliminate your comments to three minutes. So we have ordinance number one, ordinance number three, ordinance number four, ordinance number five, and ordinance number six. So no hands? Can we start with ordinance number one, third reading?
Ordinance to enact Chapter 734 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Pansville, Ohio pertaining to ice cream sales vehicles, cars within the city of Pansville, providing for licensing procedures and establishing violations required in order to proceed.
Good evening. The City Council requested that staff draft in place on the agenda an ordinance to address ice cream trucks within the city of Pansville. Attached is the ordinance that was drafted utilizing ordinances from other communities that establish standards, licensing procedures, and violations and penalties for the operation of ice cream or ice cream sales vehicles and carts within the city of Pansville. One of the discussions that we had was with regards to the insurance, and it was recommended by members of council who are in the insurance business to do a combined stake limit for liability and property damage of $500,000. This is in the third reading, and you have to answer any questions regarding the ordinance.
Tom?
Doug, could you refresh my memory of why they stopped allowing ice cream trucks?
I think initially, I mean, in the city of Pansville, we have not allowed food trucks or ice cream trucks. And initially, I believe it was for safety reasons. Joe, I think gave us a couple of other reasons.
It was safety first. I believe at one point in time, going strictly from memory, around the time that I think they got rid of them, or council did, I think it was at council's time, a child was struck and killed. I'm not sure if it was in the area. Secondly, was the noise that they were causing. And thirdly, was the concern or who was operating those trucks. Those basically are the three major reasons.
Any ordinance does address only the last two. As far as the individual, they would have to get a background check through the police department, which they would actually pay for. And it does address the noise as well, that they have to be within our noise limits, and that they can only play the noise from certain periods of time, or during certain periods of time.
I would address too, I think it also addresses the safety in that it has to be parked on the right side of the street. It can't, you know, there are safety measures that are in place. And I would also share that if I remember correctly, that Mr. Gurelik had shared that there was a number of them, and it was competitive, and they were kind of racing around, competing with each other back then.
That's true.
Yeah, and I think thus far, we've only had one person come to us asking us if we consider this. And in addition to that, I'm not hearing that that is happening in other cities, that competitiveness. I don't think that there's as many ice cream trucks competing for business as there was in the past. And I just would also remind council that, you know, many of our families are one-vehicle families. They don't, they can't get out and get up to the store. We have a lot of people that do walk in our community, so bringing the product to them, I think, could be beneficial for some of the younger, larger families that we have in the community. So I just wanted to make sure, I looked through this pretty thoroughly, but I wanted to make sure that the language does not allow, I know it's non-transferable, but if the individual that applies for the application has somebody else that's working for their company, are they able to do that, or do they have to do another $100 application fee to be able to drive that vehicle?
It states that they have to do the addition for every person, so if they have somebody riding with them, even though that person is riding with them, they are required to get a background checked as well.
And then the other thing that I wanted to ask, and it may be a moot point, but I just wanted to ask of council if they felt it would be appropriate or useful to perhaps put a calendar limit on this? You know, maybe if it was May through September or something? Because right now, it's year-round, and I don't know that an ice cream truck's going to be, you know, totem through in January, but I'm just wondering if that's something, you know, for safety reasons, if we did have one, you know, would it interfere in winter weather? Do we want kids running around outside when it's icy or smelly? That kind of stuff? If maybe we want to put a limitation on the time of year that they can be doing this?
Well, I would be inclined to put a limitation on it, but my limitation would be zero. I'm not in favor of this, and, you know, even our new developments, the streets are not that wide, and if you put an ice cream truck down those streets, and they're stopping and starting, you got cars zooming around those things, I guess I'm referring back to the wisdom of council's word, and obviously, they took it off for a reason. I think Joe gave quite a few of them. The other part of this is the cost factor. I don't know if anybody's bought something from an ice cream truck lately, but I'm pretty sure that the cost is a little bit more than if you walk into a store and pick it up, you have to pay. So I'm not quite so sure in terms of if, you know, the family's going to be able to, and it might become a nuisance to the parents, that when their children hear that bell ringing, and they're starting to say, you know, "Mom, Dad, I need $3, $4," you do that, and we're going to hear complaints from, in my opinion, the parents saying that, "Why didn't we allow this?" So I'm not for it.
And to that last point, Jim, you can't take kids anywhere then.
Say it again?
I said, "To that last point, you can't take kids anywhere then, because they want something everywhere you go." And I would add that it's
Well, that's true.
I would add that it's costly to bring a product to the doorstep anyway, and that we are seeing more people, we're seeing a slide back to people wanting to have the products brought to their house. We see that in Blue Apron and some different things that are delivered door-to-door. Granted, kids aren't going out to the truck to purchase those kind of things, but we are seeing a resurgence, a resurgence of things being delivered to your door. You can get your produce delivered now, you can call Sam's Club and order all your food online, and go there and just, in a one-stop pickup. So things are reverting back to that service. And anytime somebody's bringing you a product, it's going to be a little more expensive than if you have to go out and get it, but then you get to save money and gas.
Yeah, I didn't see it this year, but over the last couple of years, when I would go visit my daughter in Hysip Park, those ice cream trucks were going through there pretty regularly. So maybe they realized that, maybe they thought it was Pansville Township, but I'm sure Ray would say the same thing, that there have been ice cream trucks in, I don't know about this summer, but over the last couple of summers, they were there. So maybe the guy, the truck driver, thought it was Pansville Township, it didn't qualify, but they're down there, and my granddaughter runs out that door every time she hears that bell. And it's usually with nanny's over there and not mom.
That is a marketing tactic. Yes, it is.
Questions here, council?
Well, I guess I would just ask again if council would be interested in doing a time-of-year restriction, or if they want it to be all year. I think Jim commented that he does not want it ever during the year.
Well, you can move to amend it, see if somebody signs it.
Then I would like to make a motion to amend with a clause stating that it can only be in operation from May through September.
Second.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Donella?
Yes.
Mrs. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Augustine?
Yes.
Mr. Fodor?
The amendment that you put on, just so I'm clear, was what?
That the ice cream trucks can only be in operation in the city limits from May 1st through September 3rd.
This is just
This is just for the amendment.
You're not voting on it with the legislation.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure I was sure of the time. Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
No, it says amend, but you have to have a vote on it. It's on the third reading.
Motion to approve, second. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Donella?
Yes.
Mrs. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Augustine?
Yes.
Mr. Fodor?
No.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes. Ordinance number passed, ordinance number three, third reading.
An ordinance amending Section 735.11 of the municipal code of 1918, where the Houston roadside stands and selling on the street, declaring the emergency.
This legislation would just add the special with permission of the city manager for special events under our current ordinance as far as when food trucks will be permitted.
And just to clarify, Doug, the city manager's always had that kind of authority, it just wasn't in the legislature, correct?
Correct, yes.
And then also, otherwise, they're permitted? Is that correct?
Otherwise, they would be prohibited. Correct. So it would, it's, council's authorizing the city manager, just in a written format, she had that ability before, but this defines that she would be able to authorize food trucks at special events.
Move to the down. Second. Mrs. Donella?
Yes.
Mrs. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Augustine?
Yes.
Mr. Fodor?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes, ordinance number three passed, ordinance number four, third reading.
Do you want to do a presentation?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
You wanted to do his presentation now, just to give a preface to the ordinances that are coming?
Yes.
Can you authorize that?
I authorize that. Are you ready to begin?
No.
Win, go, fall. This is poor planning. Get time for the planning on the president's party.
Okay, tonight, we're going to go with the 2018 budget again. We're going to concentrate on the general fund and do a quick overview of the entire budget. The total revenues for 2018 is going to be just over $70 million. This is down $150,000 from 2017. Our city's largest source of revenues are the user fees, that's almost $40 million. That's the fees from the water, sewer, and electric. The second largest source of revenue are our taxes. That brings in about $13.1 million each year. There's income taxes in there, the property taxes, the jet money, the tip money, all of those are in there. Our third largest source of revenues are the interregional revenues, that's about $9.5 million. $8.4 million of this is for the water intake loan, the interest-free loan that we receive through the EPA. And the fourth largest source of revenues are the financing sources. This is the city rolling our notes, and this is about $2.6 million for 2018. Guys, just jump in if you have any questions. If not, we'll keep rolling. Next are the summary of expenditures by cost center. The total budget for 2018 is going to be just under $78.5 million. This is an increase of $5.4 million from 2017. The city's largest expense is for personnel services. This is payroll, hospitalization, workers' comp, and we will be spending about $28.5 million on this in 2018. Our second largest expense in 2018 will be capital outlay. This is going to be just under $20 million in 2018. The largest capital project we will be doing or requesting is the $8.4 million for the continued construction of the water intake. And our third largest source of expenses is roughly $16 million. That's for utility expenses. And the main expense in here is purchasing power for the electric plant, which is going to be $15 million in 2018. Any questions on the expenses?
Could you just take a minute to explain how the revenue is approximately $8 million less than what we expect to spend?
We are paying for all of our capital projects, we're paying cash for, so we are not issuing debt for them. We are receiving an interest-free loan for the water intake, but everything else, we're paying cash for, and so that is why it's like that. But it's also a very good sign that the city has that kind of cash available to pay for our capital projects.
So basically, we've been saving up money over the years to be able to expend on larger capital projects. So the cash, although it's not flowing in, in 2018, we've been saving it up so that we can expend it in 2018.
And one of the reasons I wanted to highlight that is that, you know, often we're asked by residents, "Do we save our money?" So clearly, that shows that we do save our money, or things like that.
Some quick budget points here. The 2018 general fund budget, we have a budget surplus for the fifth year in a row, so that's a very good sign. The general, assuming the electric funds are balanced in 2018. In the main funds, the majority of the expenses are for salaries and benefits. We are proposing $19.8 million capital projects in 2018. Again, the continued construction of the water intake project, paving the roads and repairing the sidewalks, replacing Richmond Road Waterline, and an AMI metering project for the electric department. This shows where our expenses, what funds are spending, what, the city's largest expenses go to our proprietary funds, we're also known as the enterprise fund. These are water, sewer, and electric, and these funds will account for 69% of the 2018 budget. The general fund will account for 16% of the 2018 budget, and then our special revenue funds account for about 7% of the total 2018 budget. Now we'll go over some general fund expenses. The general fund budget revenues for 2018 are going to be $12.5 million, and the expenses are a little bit over $12.5 million as well. Both the revenues and expenses have increased 1% from 2017. This is the fourth year in a row, the general fund budget revenues have increased from the prior year, so that's a great sign that the general fund revenues continue to increase. The general fund will have to transfer out $305,000 to the cemetery fund, Fund 204, so that fund can remain solvent. If the general fund did not transfer these monies into this fund, this fund would not be able to exist. And again, the general fund will have a budget surplus of $17,600. This shows where the city receives its general fund revenues. The general fund's largest source of revenues are our taxes. This is about $9.6 million. The largest revenue in this are the income taxes. The city expects to receive $8.2 million in 2018. In 2017, we budgeted $8.2 million as well. The second largest source of revenues in the general fund are the courts fees. This brings in roughly about $1 million. And the third largest source of general fund revenues are the transfers in. This is the kilowatt tax that the city receives from the inside kilowatt tax, which is about $730,000. And also, there'll be a transfer in from the fire levy fund, the old fire levy funds. The general fund, probably about 10 years ago, loaned some money to the fire levy fund, and this fund is repaying that money, and it will be all paid off in 2018. This shows revenues and expenses for the general fund. 14, 15, and 16 are the actual numbers. 2017 and 18 are the budgeted numbers. Again, this is the fifth year in a row, the general fund has a budget surplus, and the general fund continues to go in positive direction, where we're bringing in more revenues than These are the general fund's expenses. The general fund's largest source of expenses are salaries and benefits. This is going to come to $10 million in 2018. The contractual services, that's the Rita collection fee that we pay the Regional Income Tax Agency to collect the city's income taxes, the city's insurance, and then the audit and conversion. The charges and services, that makes up by the dispatch expenses that we pay to the county, the health system expenses, and then also what the city pays to the downtown Pansville organization and the Pansville City seniors organization as well. Any questions on those? This shows a personnel summary for the entire city for 2018. We will have, or we are requesting to have, 266 total employees. We are asking for some changes to personnel. In the city manager's office, we are asking for an additional full-time employee to be a communications coordinator. In the public services department, we have eliminated one position. This person worked at the parking garage that was demolished in 2016, and we no longer have a need for this position. In the police department, we are requesting one additional full-time police officer. In the recreation and public lands, we are requesting one new full-time employee as well. And then in community development, we have reduced one part-time engineer. Any questions on the personnel? Okay. And then I believe, lastly, this shows where the general fund's expenses go by department. The most, the largest general fund expense goes to the police, and the city will be spending $4.2 million on the police department from the general fund in 2018. The second largest expense the general fund has is for non-departmental, and these are hospitalization, which is going to be $1.7 million, and workers' comp, which is going to be pushing $200,000. Our third largest expense in the general fund is going to be fire, and that's just under $2.4 million. And then the fourth largest expense in the general fund are court expenses, and that's just over $1 million. I believe that is it. So, any questions on the 2018 budget?
Thank you. You did a really nice job.
Thank you. Wow.
Put your hand down.
No. That's the law.
Are you moving on to ordinance number five?
She said she waited for it. Ordnance number four. In ordinance to make appropriations for the current expenses and expenditures of the city of Pansville, state of Ohio for fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2018, adopting the operating budget and declaring the urgency.
Okay, we're going to leave this on for another reading, so let's move to first reading. We'll move into ordinance number five, first reading.
of the issuance of bonds to pay costs for rehabilitation and improving the Chestnut Street Water Storage Chamber, resulting in water running in Elm Street, together with all purposes thereto, improving the city storm's water management system by constructing and installing storms to reduce retention basins and inlet basins, together with all purposes thereto, resurfacing portions on Nelson Street, East Main Street, and certain city streets to be provided, to be approved by city council, together with all purposes thereto, acquiring the dump truck with snow plow, together with necessary purposes thereto, including the stormwater management system by constructing and installing storms to reduce retention water management system by constructing and installing storm steward lines, retention basins, inlet basins, and related improvements, including the North Avenue Storm Water Project and the city's two thousand ten storm water improvement program, together with all purposes thereto, relocating water mains along State Street eighty-six and Auburn Road, together with any necessary purposes thereto, improving our municipal water system by constructing and installing new water lines and other dis- distribution systems, together with the necessary purposes thereto, extending sanitary sewer length and constructing a pump station to service the Shamrock Boulevard area of the city, altogether with the necessary purposes thereto, declaring emergency.
This is the second sentence. Okay, um, these are all projects that the city's already done. Um, we are paying down our notes by six hundred thousand dollars, which is a very significant amount. We're paying them off by almost forty percent. Um, so that's very good. Again, there's no new debt in this, and it's all projects that have already been done. We're just paying for the projects we've done in the past. And you can go through your reads with us.
We'll keep this on first reading, then. Uh, ordinance number six, first reading.
An ordinance enacting section nine three three one number one of the Beasley quarter nineteen eighteen relating to extending the water system infrastructure improvement fee and declaring emergency.
Okay, this, uh, legislation was requested, uh, by the finance committee, and we are requesting to extend the current water infrastructure fee. Current one expires June thirtieth, twenty, uh, twenty-six, and we would like to extend this to December thirty-first, twenty thirty-nine. The reason for this, uh, the debt for the water intake will be roughly eight hundred and fifty thousand to nine hundred thousand dollars a year, and this debt will run all the way through twenty thirty-nine. So we would like to have this water infrastructure be extended so we could cover the debt payments for the water intake project. If it's not extended, uh, the city will have to do less capital projects in the water department to, um, reserve monies for future debt payments.
There's a typo on here. It says December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. Supposed to be thirty months?
That's in the, in the.
Where's that?
In the council members', um, packet, the city manager's report.
Send it back.
Oh, I, uh, on the city manager's report?
Yeah.
Uh, I.
And, yeah.
So just to check the legislation.
But the legislation is correct.
Okay. Yes.
Looking at, yep.
Is there any reason that this has to be approved to make it?
So how much money do we have set aside already?
Um, last year we set aside approximately six hundred thousand dollars.
And that money would, would have come out of the water?
The water fund.
So it's part of the, can be used for anything but water?
Correct. All right, and that's twenty seventeen, sorry, I'm already into eighteen.
I was just curious, um, it would be great to have the additional monies, uh, per year. Well, what would, do you have any idea what those would go to, or would we just kind of?
We have, um, a water infrastructure, um, assessment already done that lays out the major projects that need to be accomplished, how much they are, when they should be done. We're actually already a couple of years behind on that schedule. Um, we're not able to afford to move forward with those capital improvements because we've been saving, or we are saving the money aside. So they would go to things like replacing mains that are failing, um, prior to resurfacing roads.
And I'd like to point out, the water infrastructure fee currently generates about one point two million dollars a year. So if the debt payment is eight hundred to nine hundred thousand dollars, most of that money is going to be going towards a debt payment.
I also wanted to, I think, I, if I have this correct, just remind council members as well as residents that one of the reasons that this became a priority for council was that there were some safety concerns as far as, um, our fire department and stuff like that, and the water lines failing for them. Am I correct in, in my memory on that?
There were concerns about, uh, the water pressure or from the water department, yes. And then also to replace the water lines and to improve the infrastructure going into the water line. So if we have gold-plated water lines and we have junk coming into it, it's not gonna be that good.
And, and then also, just, just as a reminder to residents, that, you know, many over communities like ours are struggling with infrastructure type issues, and we have to address that. We can't keep putting them off down the road.
That's true, 'cause that's why we're currently where we're at, because the roads and water lines and so forth have been kicked down the road, so to speak, and now we're having to address those. The other part I like about this is, it's very transparent in the water bill that people receive. You know, um, if, if you're trying to build it into your water, what you're charging, people don't see that, but they see this fee on their, uh, their bill, and so therefore they know that it's for the, uh, infrastructure, and that's the only thing that that money can be spent.
Well, and I'd also add that at the time this fee was approved initially, we did not have the water levy, and I think that we, you know, obviously need to, we need to keep the roads going with the fees and we're not making a road. So we're not, yeah, going backwards every time and we do anything.
It's the last thing you wanna do like they said, is to repair the road two years after you put it down.
And that's why we're doing the Richmond Road, what I'm on this year.
And I would, I would ask this question too, just, um, I can foresee residents wondering why we initially, um, thought that we could, um, terminate it into twenty twenty-six, like at the time they, uh, intake project.
Twenty year, I think it was just a twenty year, there wasn't, and the water intake was not, um, a project at that point when this was approved.
Thank you.
That's true.
So by taking this out to twenty thirty-nine, will that, if we didn't have the water intake project, so we have it till twenty twenty-six, there will be one point two million over the next, um, nine years, eight years? So that would have generated over ten million dollars. So now that the money's gonna be sucked up for the intake, not all, but the part of it, what will suffer? We would have had that ten million if we didn't have to do the water intake. We would have had that tenish billion at that point, so what, what gets?
That's why we're already behind schedule on the water infrastructure assessment we already had done. So there are roads, there are mains that haven't been replaced that were as thought of as a priority, and that's how, I mean, when you take capital, move it to another location, other capital projects get, um, put aside. So now, if we know that this money is going to be available, we'll have to do what we've done with all of the projects, which is some years we'll have to save up in order to spend cash in the next year, or we'll have to forego some projects one year, knowing that next year's a bigger project here. So we'll just have to be smart with the money, just like we are with all of our capital funding.
So there's no, of course it's a genocide, but there's no concern that we're gonna get in a deeper hole?
Yes, I would say yes, there's still a concern, which is why we're doing the water rate, the cost of service study, to make sure that those who use our system are being charged appropriately. Because as we mentioned in last week's presentation, the water, um, enterprise fund itself is not self-sustaining, um, we're actually in a deficit this year. So when you start to see that kind of a trend, you need to make sure you're charging appropriate fees. So that's why we're doing the cost of service. We'll eventually bring back rate options.
Okay, thank you.
If you have this as, this doesn't need to be passed to me.
No, it doesn't.
Let's leave this on, uh, first reading. Ordinance number six. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Uh, new business, appointment to the jet board. Doug right now is on the jet board. They need to have an appointment or reappointment by December seventh or something, so, um, can I get an obnation in a second?
That's an obnation, who is the jet board?
I'll cycle that. Several columns in there.
Mrs. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Augustine?
Yes.
Mr. Futter?
Yes.
Mrs. Shue?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Donella?
Yes.
Mr. Hatt?
Yes, congratulations, Doug, and you're the administrator of the board law director.
I know you're this time.
City manager.
I have the report.
Clerk of council.
The next regular council meeting will be held Monday, December fourth, two thousand seventeen, at seven thirty. Spirit of the season is December second, from noon four, at Pansyl United Methodist Church. The broadcasting system for the area is converted to digital. Channel hall is no longer available. Council meetings are available to view at pansyl.com and the library. There's a meet greet next Monday, November twenty-seventh, at Elm Street School Library. Stop by from seven to nine to meet Monica and the new chief, uh, police chief, Dan Marvin. Um, City Hall will be closed, uh, Thursday for Thanksgiving. Fred articles, deadline is Friday, December first.
Thank you. Uh, closing comments. Jim? Um, I'm good. Wow. Nick?
I'm good today.
Christine?
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. I would eat a lot, so I plan to. And I'd also like to, um, thank the recreation park for the, the way the street looked for the holiday open house. It was, those big candy canes really did it for me. I was really excited to see them. It was really nice, they did a great job, and, um, thank you, 'cause they did a lot of work, and I wanna make sure we get back to that work.
Thank you. Tom?
Uh, just happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Katie?
Um, I would like to thank, and Monica will probably correct me if I'm wrong, the fire department, as well as the, um, city employees and Pastor Mary Bell's church for, um, doing the two hundred Thanksgiving Day meals. Um, every year, that is a massive undertaking. Um, I can't even fathom what goes into accruing all of those things, um, and then to turn out, turn around and distribute them, um, that's, it's, it has such a huge impact on our community, um, and I just really appreciate everybody for everything we do with that, um, and have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Careful, kids are out of school, and that's it.
You're right.
I just did the, uh, happy Thanksgiving, uh, and asked everybody to make sure that they are driving safely and, uh, um, being, uh, responsible. That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you. I just, um, wanna give a shout out to Richard Klein, a retired police officer from the city of Pansyl, and his daughter's supposed to be watching this video, and the keyword's number ten, so if you don't know number ten, then I'm not gonna sign off for your sheet. And I would like to, uh, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, so, thank you. Thank you, motion?
Mr. Gerald?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.